I'd like to call this public hearing in order. I'm sorry, the microphone sound system sounds a little funny, so I'll just speak about these two issues. Will you please all stand for the President? Davis?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The third please call the roll.
More Conti?
Present.
Curran?
Here.
Visconti?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Seabury?
Here.
Stanley?
Taylor?
Here.
Cola?
Here.
Egashet?
Present.
Callis?
Here.
Abbo?
Present.
Sadi?
Here.
Visconti?
Here.
Fontana?
Now?
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Genice?
Present.
Montello?
Here.
Heischel?
Present.
Tumino?
Here.
On the record, we have 17 present for absent. Mr. Riley is out of town on vacation. Mrs. Stanley will be on vacation. Mr. Fontana is heading to business. And Mr. Knapp is heading to business. Notice is hereby given that the City Council's citizen members will hold public hearings at which parties of interest and citizens will have an opportunity to be heard in relation to the following copies of which are on file in the Assistant's Office for Public Inspection. Government Entities, Court of Ordinances, Section 2-176. Item Number 2, the acquisition by the City of Danbury of State Armory Building, West Street, and subsequent transfer thereof to Connecticut Institute for Communities. Item Number 3, the transfer by the City of Danbury of land known as tax lot number I-23012 to Noel Seabury in exchange for an easement for Ivy Trail. Said public hearing to be held on Tuesday, the 15th day of February, 2011, 7:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers, the City Hall on 55th Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, which was tested by a G-Vali Legislative Assistant. And if you would notify the council members that are here present, we will be having the meeting of all immediately follow the public to take up action on item number 1. Over. If any member of the public wishes to address us, I would ask you, please come forward. Please state your last name, your address, and for the record, just make sure the clerk has your last name, so you're free to shoot it back. Normally during public hearings, we don't try to press any questions. I think we're here to listen to the public. We don't answer questions to be discussing ourselves. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item number 1, Government Entities? Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 1, Government Entities? Seeing that, we'll move on to item 2, the acquisition of the City of Danbury of State Armory Building, West Street, and subsequent transfer thereof to Connecticut Institute for Communities. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the common council. My name is Paul Jaber. I'm Attorney at Law, 148 Deer Hill Avenue in Danbury, and I represent the Connecticut Institute for Communities, Inc. The Connecticut Institute is located at Old Sherman Turnpike in Danbury, and the President of the Connecticut Institute, Mr. Jim Maloney, is here, who will also address you, but he'll save his remarks till the end. If there are interim speakers, they'll allow them to speak first, and he'll be able to address any questions they may have, so save time in answering the issues that may be raised. This is a proposal. This is on your agenda. It's a, the City of Danbury, it's a request that the City of Danbury purchase the State Armory that's on West Street, and then convey the armory to the Connecticut Institute. Just a little background on the armory. Years ago, the armory was built to service the Connecticut National Guard, and at some point in time, the National Guard moved to a location someplace else in Connecticut. But during the time that they used it, the facility was open to all Danbury youths, and at that time, I can tell you that I enjoyed using it myself. I lived nearby and used to bike to it, and probably Mr. Visconti did the same thing. But there was basketball, actually boxing, baseball, and gymnastics, and everyone in the area enjoyed the facility. When the war wore on, they came around, and that really took over a lot of the activities. But in any event, it was truly a wonderful facility in those days. And more recent history, though, Westcon, Western Connecticut State University, now uses a portion of the building. I believe they control the entire facility, though. They use a portion of the building for storage for their student arts program. And the building is also used by, under an occupancy arrangement with Westcon, by Jericho Partnership and the Harambe Center for recreational uses and human service needs for those two I believe that Westcon has probably constructed or is in the process of constructing the facility to service their arts program in the downtown. In 2007, Jim Maloney and the Danbury area legislators were able to get a special act passed by the Connecticut Legislature to authorize the sale of the armory to the City of Danbury. The act provided certain conditions, that the conveyance could not take place before January 1st, 2011, and that was to enable Westcon to construct the facility to relocate what it had stored in the armory. Second, that the city could reconvey the property to a Connecticut nonprofit organization, and the Connecticut Institute is a Connecticut nonprofit organization. In other words, it anticipated that the city would convey it to someone who would operate it for the purposes permitted. And the third condition was that the use of the property must be for social or human services purposes. So it authorized, first, the conveyance to the city, second, the reconveyance to a Connecticut nonprofit, but at third, it conditioned the use of the facility for social or human services purposes. Those are the words used in the special act. Subsequently thereafter, in a combined effort between Amir Bauten and Mr. Maloney, the Connecticut Institute agreed to several things. First, to negotiate in good faith an occupancy agreement with Jericho Partnership and the Harambe to continue their uses in the premises. In other words, they would remain there and continue to use the premises while Connecticut Institute owned the property. Second, they agreed to pay all costs associated with the conveyance of the armory from the State of Connecticut to the city. It's a small amount, but they agreed they would pay that. Third, they would undertake a design and financial studies to allow for the rehabilitation of the building, including the historic preservation of the exterior of the building. That is a tremendous undertaking. Mr. Maloney will talk further about it, but the intent is to preserve the historic exterior of the building. It's, I don't know how long it's been here, but it's been here as long as I've been here, which is getting longer and longer, unfortunately. And the fourth was to continue the use of the building as required by the special act, which is for social and human services needs. This conveyance, should you approve it, is a wonderful opportunity for the city to preserve a historic building and to ensure its continued use for Danbury residents. The planning mission has issued a positive recommendation, and the subcommittee, the ad hoc subcommittee, has also issued a unanimous recommendation for the purchase and reconveyance of the facility. Thank you very much. And again, Mr. Maloney will address you after any other person's made a recommendation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on item number 2? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item 2? Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. My name is Jim Maloney. I'm the resident of the City of Danbury. I reside at 15 Worcester Heights in Danbury, have so resided at that exact location for more than 30 years, and a pleasure to be with you tonight. Mr. Jaber did a very good job explaining the history of the project and its use. I would only add that currently, the building is still utilized by the Harambe program, and we, at the request of the mayor and with the agreement of the City Council in terms of your annual funding, continue to act as the fiduciary for the Harambe program in that location. In other words, we don't try to run their program for them, but we make sure the funding is accounted for, and there's a human resources process, and all of the technicalities are taken care of. And we would anticipate that the Harambe program would continue to utilize the armory after it is rehabilitated. The Harambe program really is an afternoon and early evening program, so one of the great things we have an opportunity to do here is if we rehabilitate this building, it's going to make the facility available mornings and weekends. So we're going to be able to take a facility which has limited use now and make it more available to the community for human and social service purposes, as stipulated in the special act. The Jericho Partnership, this is an interesting tale. The Jericho Partnership no longer uses the building. We'd be delighted to have them as a partner in all of this, but they made a request to the State of Connecticut to donate about $300,000 towards the installation of a new gym floor. For those of you who, like Mr. Visconti, have been into the armory, the armory basically is office space in the front, and then it opens up into a huge gymnasium, and then in the very back, there's a former garage facility, which is now actually used as a workout room. The gym floor needs to be replaced. That's one item, about $300,000. Jericho offered to replace the gym floor. The State of Connecticut declined the donation, and they did so because they were concerned that somehow it was a gift that violated the ethics laws, okay? Leave that aside. I mean, I think that was a foolish decision, but it makes the point that the state doesn't really, isn't really going to get their sleeves rolled up and do anything about this building. Westcon, obviously, we've talked to Westcon about this as we've gone forward with the concept, and they have a master plan for the university, and the master plan leaves off the armory. Western is interested in developing their west side campus, interested in developing their downtown campus, not interested in sort of leftover pieces, white elephants, miscellaneous pieces of property, including the armory. So Western has no long-term use. As Mr. Jaber indicated, there was an interim use for the armory, which is storage of supplies and materials, and that's why there was such a long conveyance date, right? This legislation passed, the legislature in 2007. If you look at, typically, when the legislature does something like this, the conveyance is six months a year. Well, this is four years, but that was to give Westcon time to do their business. The long-term plan for the armory, rather than leave it to rot, which is in effect what's happened, the armory was built in 1912, so next year it'll be 100 years old. It is a historic building. As Mr. Jaber said, not only has it been used, obviously, by the young people in the City of Danbury for a long time, it was used by the Army, the Reserves, the Guard, for many, many years, and saw military department in the State of Connecticut through First World War, Second World War, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, Grenada, right up till, I'm not sure the exact date, but right up until about the year 2000, when the military department took new space in Commerce Park. So that's where they are now. That's why they left the armory to go. The plan that we have as a private entity, Connecticut Institute for Communities, is a Connecticut incorporated nonprofit charitable organization, 501(c)(3), official designated status by the Internal Revenue Service. But as a private entity, we are going to be able to structure the rehabilitation as a historic tax credit rehabilitation project. That will give us the opportunity, both because it is a historic building, and will give us the opportunity to get the funds necessary. We estimate about, our preliminary look, we did do a very brief, but preliminary look, about $6 million. And for that $6 million, what you get is we'll put a new roof on it, we'll obviously re-point the bricks, but it needs a new heating system, it needs an electrical system, it needs that new gym floor, it needs new showers and locker rooms, so it needs a tremendous amount of work. But by using the historic tax credit program, we believe we can finance the rehabilitation of that building and achieve two goals. One is the preservation of what is a historic building in the City of Danbury and the continued use of that building to benefit the community, particularly the young people of the City of Danbury. So with that, I will conclude my remarks, and thank you very much for your kind interest in what I think will be a very good project for the city at large, and obviously for the young people, who will have a better facility to use over the course of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on item number 2, the acquisition by the City of Danbury of State Armory, the subsequent transfer thereof to the Connecticut Institute for Communities? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 2? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 2? On item number 3, the transfer of the City of Danbury of land known as tax lot I-23012 to North Street 1 in exchange for an easement for Ivy Trail. Any other member of the public wishing to address the City Council on, turn?
I'm Mike Cunningham, 101 West Studing Road. I am chairman of the Ivy Trail Task Force. Recognizing that this hearing is not about the Ivy Trail, I do wish the public to know that the Task Force will hold a public information meeting later this year. That would pertain to the big picture of the Ivy Trail, where it goes, what the rules are, where a map's going to be found, that stuff just prior to the opening of the entire Danbury Road. I have the advantage over a number of people in the room in that I've actually set foot on that parcel. It might really be better said that I set foot in it, because it's kind of in, in money. It's not a prime piece of real estate, and having dealt with this from when we found that it was owned by the city and that we could trade it with a conservation easement and in addition get some other property which was not available for the trail, I am in favor of this council. Thank you for your time.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to, Mrs. Anderson?
My name is Lynn Chaversap. I reside at 110 Hayestown Road, and I don't think the transfer is such a great idea. I'm concerned, looking at the resolution, that it appears that the city is looking for an easement so that people can cross over 100 feet of property owned by Mr. Roy and enjoy the Ivy Trail. And I don't think it's the only easement that you've had to authorize and accept in order to make the trail a rich field. In fact, I think you do easements five, six, seven times a year for a variety of things, fixing bridges, expanding sewers, but in this particular case, it looks as though, in order to get an easement to this little 100-foot piece, you're going to give him 2.7 acres of city-owned land and $11,000. And I think that would be okay if you never, ever, ever had to go out and try to get another easement from another property owner, because they will look at this deal and say, "When the city wants an easement across my property, I'm going to ask for $15,000 and 10 acres. I'm going to do better than Mr. Roy." I think it sets an awful precedent. I was interested to hear Mike say that he didn't think it was a prime piece of property, so we shouldn't be paying $11,000 for it. We shouldn't be giving away 2.7 acres of a city-owned property, we should be taking it in the domain, and it would be for the public good, for the right of the public to enjoy the Ivy Trail. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council, Mr. Duckery?
Let's come up here with the read, address the mic, it's short and firm, in a term. Ken Duckery, 89 Pedenir Road, Danbury, Connecticut. Ms. Chaversap, I took many of the points that I was going to also bring up. We have, we have a trail, the Ivy Trail, but we're going to eventually extend it all the way down to Maryland. That's where I believe it's all going to end. By taking almost three acres of city-owned property and using it as a bargaining chip, again, sets an awful precedent. We don't know what we're going to run into in the future and what other people are going to want as a bargaining chip. To pay $11,000 on top of it also is not the best idea. Again, precedent, how much more can we get? By getting rid of three acres of city-owned property, what's going to be the future development of this property? Is it going to be joined with another piece to where now we come in at a later date with either cluster development, or we come in with affordable housing, and things of that sort, to where even if this piece of property is not a prime piece of real estate, does it become the easement that, say, the developer gives back to the city to put development up there? So we don't know if, what's going to come down the road. I think it's a bad idea. I mean, in all four open spaces, I think the Ivy Trail is a great idea. I think more people should spend more time out in the environment, and maybe they would really see what these environmental concerns are, you know, for themselves. But to have to give away what we already own, which, you know, what's the appraisal? 40,000, 50,000, 80,000? What's that property worth? Then to give another 11 on top of it, you know, it's just a bad, bad signal to send to other prospective people that we need permission to cross the property. And by doing this trade, we're not garnishing city property, we're just garnishing an easement. We're getting the right to cross over that property, but the city will never have actually ownership of, it will not be ours. So again, I think it's a bad precedent. I think, you know, in tough economic times, you really should look at what we're doing here. Giving away property, buying the rights to cross over property. How development, down the road, could this impact us with development, like I said, as far as cluster developments, et cetera? Is this really going to come back to bite us in the long run? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 3? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 3, which is the transfer of the land, this tax lot number I-23012? Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 3?
Mr. Jarrett? As the attorney who, Ray Yan, Associate Corporation Counsel. As the attorney who worked, primary work on this matter, I think I could shed some light on some of the issues raised by the members of the public that came up today. I think it might certainly help the council to understand the background of probably your ideas where we're at. This parcel of land, as has been mentioned, is a landlocked parcel that the city acquired, I believe it was in a tax sale of somewhere around 1962. So we've been sitting on this parcel for a long time.
Mr. Jim? I'm sorry, I apologize, counsel. It's a little bit odd to have a representative of the city testifying in the public hearing portion rather than a committee or an ad hoc committee. I don't object to it, and I think it actually is helpful. But what I want to ask is the indulgence of the body here, if we're going to have the city addressing questions from the public, that we then be able to ask questions and have a give and take on this, because it's the city addressing the public's concern from that side of the dice rather than this side, and so it's opening up that door, I think.
I agree with you, Mr. Sadi. Mr. Jarrett?
Whatever your advice is.
Maybe it'd be better to help for the March meeting, and then, you know, when we go into question answer session, when we get up the headline, we're in it in March, we can have you come up and present, and then we can ask our questions at that time.
So, is that what you're going to do at that time? That's funny. I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions, and that's why I want to ask this before a lot of information came out, then.
Since we're in the March meeting anyway, maybe we should go to the March meeting, and we can just take it up.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 3? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item 3? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item number 3? I don't have any motion. So, Mr. Visconti, second by Mr. Seabury. At this time, I will open up the committee to hold item number 1, and next, please, please call the roll.
More Conti?
Present.
Curran?
Here.
Visconti?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Seabury?
Here.
Stanley?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Cola?
Here.
Egashet?
Present.
Callis?
Here.
Abbo?
Present.
Sadi?
Present.
Visconti?
Present.
Fontana?
Now?
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Genice?
Present.
Montello?
Here.
Heischel?
Present.
Tumino?
Here.
As I recall, there's still 17 members present, four of whom are absent for the same reasons I mentioned earlier, we have to work out with them. Mr. Pinter? Would you please, I want to say a brief rundown of the number of them.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Item number 1 is an annual exercise that the council engages in as a result of their Court of Ordinances requirement. There's a rotating list of agencies, commissions, and boards that exists in the City of Danbury. As you all know, they're probably 20 to 25. Each year, you get a batch of them before you. You send it to a committee, the committee reviews them, they have the board representative or the commission representative in at the committee. The committee examines what the agency or board does, makes some determination about whether the agency or board or commission should continue to exist, to be terminated or otherwise disposed of, and then makes a recommendation back to the City Council. This particular grouping is the grouping that would expire in 2011, at the end of this year. If the council, tonight, for the march, you end up approving the recommendation of the committee on this, you would be renewing these three agencies, boards, and commissions, and they're all different, all those three. You would be renewing those for the five-year period of time in accordance with the committee's recommendation. What you have in your packet, you have the cover letter, which was the original letter, What you have in your packet, you have the cover letter, which was the original letter, you'll recall, from the December agenda. That popped over to the committee, the committee forwarded back to the council, and that's attached as well as item one dash two. And you have an ordinance that you would adopt, you could recommend it tonight, but the ordinance would be adopted in the March. And the ordinance would result in that bottom grouping, which was seen in subsection E. Those are the three commissions, they're all commissions, that makes it easy. All three of those commissions would be renewed for five additional years if the council then approved the renewal. So that's, that's kind of the way it works. And the next year, you'll see grouping A come to you for a similar process. So, again, tonight, if you recommend the committee's recommendation, you recommend to the council the adoption of the ordinance, which would renew these three commissions. That's essentially it.
Thank you, Ms. Finkler. And also, councilwoman. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to recommend, in accordance with section 2-184, Danbury Code of Ordinances, the reestablishment of the Danbury Parks and Recreation Commission, the Aviation Commission, and the Youth Commission through June 30th, 2016.
So, motion being made, and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Any discussion? Mr. Cheeves?
The question regarding the youth commission, was that only supposed to be extended for two years?
Mr. Cheeves, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
And for the, for the, um, the youth commission, was that only supposed to be extended only two years? I mean, that was the ad hoc before, I think, Mr. Finkler said it was five years.
Yes, my mistake, Mr. Cheeves. Yes, the, the motion from the committee did say that commission extended for two years. My mistake. Thank you.
So it's in subsection E, it's changing.
Mr. Chairman, on the ordinance, is she being held subject to the 2016 small three?
That's, that's also correct. We will, the ordinance that we'll provide you for the March meeting will have that adjustment made, so that we're in the other category, 2013.
But that will not affect the public hearing portion?
No. It will not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeves. Any other discussion? Signify by a single aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody have seen? This time, all in, in the motion, the chair. Senator Taylor, seconded by Mr. Seaberry. All those in favor, the chair, if you can confirm by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.